Stand up and we'll have the pledge by Mr. Carpenter and the prayer by Mr. Coe.
My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Kind most gracious heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to come together once again. Please give us the knowledge and the wisdom to be able to navigate this difficult process. Dear heavenly Father, we ask that you be with the students and the teachers throughout all of this and help us be able to make the best decisions that are going to help us guide this school year and hopefully keep everyone safe. In your precious son's name that I pray, amen.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order. First of all, is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
One second.
Sure.
I want a favor, show of hands. As we go into this discussion, if you've got something to say, we might, you're the only one, you may want to keep your eyes up to you. We might want to take our mask off so they can hear because we don't have the microphones with us tonight, and then we can put them right back on. Is that all right with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, Mr. Sale, if you would please.
Every year we have an appropriations request that we present to the county for the commissioners. They've asked that we have that to them by March 22nd, which is next Monday. So Stephanie and Tommy and I have been working this week to put some numbers together to take to the county. We'd like for you to look at those. If you want to approve of this request, that's fine. Typically, we just agree on it and make any adjustments and then take it to them and let Kevin guide the commissioners through it. For the first part though, I would like for Stephanie Treadway to come and to talk about the larger current expense, local current expense that we'll be requesting from them.
Good evening. Okay, so we should have before you the local current expense budget. And I'm just going to go over just the highlights. The overall budget is, for local current expense, is $1,227,464. This is a tentative budget. This won't be, like Mr. Sale said, the final approved budget. We've not yet gotten what our exact retirement rate is from the state or what our health insurance benefits are going to cost for the next fiscal year. I have put in these numbers with estimates. But the maintenance staff salaries, which consists of seven positions this year, or this upcoming year will be $263,407. That is assuming a 2% raise and that's if the state does authorize that in their budget for next year. The seven positions, out of those seven positions, we no longer have a full-time maintenance director. We've consolidated that position. But we do have one new position for admin assistant for the maintenance department, and that's included. Along with that is, are the benefits associated with those salaries. And the retirement rate is, I put in an estimate of 22%. It could be as high as 23.68%, so we'll adjust that before we approve our final budget. Health insurance, the estimate that I used was $6,647 per employee per year. And then longevity, that's just estimated on the years of experience or years of service for the maintenance staff there of $3,100. Workers' comp of $11,596. And then for our utilities, those have been increased based on an estimate of a percent increase for the next year, but also they've been offset with what Schneider Electric had estimated as our cost savings from our energy project. So those are already reflecting that reduction, which overall for all of our services is about $152,000. But as you'll see on down, we have our energy savings debt service. So we begin our installment payments for our loan for the energy project beginning this next coming month in April. And those payments are $12,644 a month, so that'll be $151,737 for the year. Next, we have a Senovia contract. That is a lease contract that we have had for four years. So next year will be our fifth year of that lease. And that is for the GPS on our, on our school buses. So we're asking for that contribution for this year again. Payments to charter schools, as you know, we have to share a portion of our local current expense. So based on their ADM and our ADM combined, we do a prorata portion of that. So estimate about $50,000 to charter schools. This year, the county gave us a special allotment for some reading specialists and then also for two virtual facilitators. So we had a total of seven positions this year, five of which were reading specialists and then the two facilitators. Next year, we have asked for the five reading specialists. And those will be estimated, I think, three at West Elementary and two at East. But the total cost of that is estimated $180,000. So for next year, the request that we have for the county is for the regular appropriation of $970,231, and that's about a $70,000 increase over this current year. The $180,000 for the special allotment for reading specialist and then the $18,233 special allotment for Senovia. And then also from the county, we also received timber receipts and fines and forfeitures. So just based on this year's revenue, that's the estimate for next year. Our fines and forfeitures continue to be down right now. So I'm still estimating that it's going to be down next year as well. So that gives us a total, like I said, $1.2 million. Any questions?
I have one question. The reading specialists that you're getting, $180,000, are the benefits up in there somewhere? Is that included up above?
If that's on, yes, yeah. I think, I think in your packet I gave you, did I get it in detail? Maybe I didn't. But, but yes, it's the salaries and the fringes.
Okay.
Thank you. And in the remainder of the pack that you have there on the second, third, and fourth page is the capital outlay, which really has to do with things more than salaries. The way that we come about these projects or decide upon these projects is we ask principals of what they believe that they're going to be needing and what they would like to see happen at their schools. And then this year, Tommy and I walked through each campus with the principal and also with one of their custodians to look at some needs. There are some significant water abatement issues that we need to look at, particularly at West and maybe some at the middle school too. A lot of that has to do with the age of the guttering and the functioning of the guttering that we have. And to be honest, I'm not sure what that's going to cost. Tommy's going to be trying to find some, some people who can give us some bids on that. The guttering at the elementary schools is pretty large and heavy duty. So that's going to be a new, a new issue for both of us to look into. We have some other issues, particularly the pre-K that we need to look at. Those, right now, we're just looking at keeping the pre-K in a solid position because our hope and our plan is to have a new, a new building, a new site somewhere in hopefully three to five years at a maximum. And so pouring a lot of money into those buildings right now might not be the wisest use of funding, although we want to keep them safe and keep them as comfortable as we can. And then there are some other things that we've looked at also in the buildings. One of them has to do with the gymnasium at the middle school. That building was built in the 1950s and it still has the two bathrooms in it that were put in when it was built, and that's all. And sometimes it's almost a little shameful to take people in there because of the lack of facilities. And so Mr. Kerr and Mr. Sutton, and then before Mr. Sutton, I've, I've asked for new bathrooms in there. And so we have, we're going to ask for some engineering money to see how we can accomplish that. We've done that before and there was an engineering plan that was given to us to place bathrooms in the, in the backside, actually almost next to the bank of the gym. And the price of that was somewhere around $900,000. And in my opinion, I think we can do better than that by putting them inside somewhere. Mr. Kerr and Mr. Dills and I looked at that. We have an idea, but that needs to be engineered. That will be one of the first steps. Some of the things that I'm talking to you about right now is where we're going to request money out of the quarter cent sales because those costs may be fairly exorbitant. Last year, there was over $400,000 that came out of that tax item. And I don't know exactly how much those things that I just mentioned are going to cost, but we'll, we will approach them one at a time and make sure that the funding is there for those. On the other side of that, every year whenever Ms. Treadway puts together that general request, we're also asking for capital money for other smaller items to take care of. And that's what you have on page two, three, and four. At the high school, there are about 10 items that we need to look at. We don't know the cost of each of those. One of those is the fire alarm system that is currently being managed by two different companies. And we need to pull that underneath one roof somehow. So we're going to request quotes and project, and project ideas out of that or for that one. Also, the cabinets that are in the, the food and nutrition area are the same cabinets that were there when they built the building 40 years ago. I don't know who put the cabinets in the high school 40 years ago, but I'm pretty sure that they were a Silver Webster graduate because all of the cabinetry was that gosh awful gold orange. And we want to get rid of those. But I don't know if you've priced cabinets lately. I know you have, Kim. They're, they're pretty exorbitant, so we need to get some quotes on that as well. That's why those two items here don't have numbers beside them. The rest of the, rest of those items are self-explanatory. Right now, it looks like about $138,000 worth of work there. For the middle school, Tim's been after us. Vicki, are you here? Just be still. Tim's been after us to get awnings, and I think that we can incorporate that into this budget. Vicki has been after us to get awnings at, for West Elementary too, but hers will cost five times as much. And so we'll have to find a way to have a bake sale so that we can afford that, okay? There's also some work that needs to be done in the gym there. We need to have some, some paint and some other things taken care of as well at the, at the middle school. East Elementary would like for their, their media center to be as pretty and wonderful as the one at West Elementary, and I would as well, but it's going to take a little bit of funding to do that and some new furniture. So we have that in the east budget. And then there's some fencing that needs to be taken care of. You see those costs there. West Elementary is very similar. Vicki would like to close in an office space and make it look more like East. I don't know why East and West compete against each other like they do, but if we do something that one of them, the other one has to have it, it's like brothers and sisters. It's, it's really interesting. So you'll notice that those are fairly complimentary. And the things that we're doing at East this year, we did at West last year, and you get it, okay? Maybe they'll be happy after this. I don't know. The pre-K has some minor things that we need to take care of, and you can see what those are, including some upgrades for paint. We need to look at the inside and make it a little more, a little prettier perhaps, for lack of better, for better words. And then of course, we have some typical things that we have to take care of, like we have to buy desks and chairs every year because they just wear out, you know? It's hard, hard for kids to be still, I guess, huh, Mr. Carson?
Yes, I'll second that.
Yeah, I'm saying that because I, he was not a very quiet student when he was growing up.
I thought you were talking about my kid.
No, I was talking about you. And there's, there's quite a bit of paving that we need to do at the high school to help finish our project out. The, the cap that goes in the new front and around what used to be the old front is included in the, the contract. But there's some other paving that we need to take care of back where the faculty are, are parking now in front of the gym. If you've driven back there, you'll see that there's some gravel in some areas that we need to take care of. We're estimating that all of the paving that we need to do across the entire county, which includes covering some of the, the work that was done behind East and West Elementary to, to block water on those gym walls, all of that is going to cost about $100,000 because paving is not always cheap, okay? If you look at all of those numbers and you put them together on the last page of this proposal, you see, you see that there's about $383,000 worth of capital expenditures we need. We're requesting from the county 160, and then we will make up the difference. I'm hoping that there may be enough money left in the loan for the expansion at the high school to take care of the paving. We have a conversation with Kevin, about, Kevin King, about that tomorrow as we move to the close of that project, and we'll see if that money is there, okay? Of course, this is a preliminary budget and it may be adjusted along the way, okay? The rest of it you have in front of you and you can read. Do you, do you have any questions? Would you like for me to explain anything else? Again, that doesn't, we have not asked the board to approve this in the past. If you want to, when we get into the action portions of this meeting, you certainly can, but it will have to be adjusted again at some point probably, and that would take approval at that point too, okay? It's up to you.
I'm not sure we need to approve the preliminary until, because we're going to approve the budget monthly anyway.
Right.
I might point out too, this is for next year, our planning, what we're going to do is separate from that. For example, we're all going to look at the middle school at some point in time, and our planning and what we're, how we're going to move up there in the pre-K. And then we'll start looking at, you know, he's already met with the surveyors on the road. And then trying to, at some point, we'll try to look at a couple of county representatives, a couple of commissioners, and we're going to go up there and start looking at possibility of when we can do a track and how we're going to finance it and how we go about it. Those are critical needs also because, you know, we're looking at kids in class. We want them in class and they have a good classroom. We also want them to have facilities.
Yes.
And right now, thanks to Cherokee Schools, they can use their track. But, you know, we should have a facility for our kids. And so that's outside planning out of what he's done there. We're going to try to get that cranked up again. We're running behind because with COVID, we've not had much multiple planning. Any questions?
Well, some of the things, Mr. McKenna, that you mentioned, I put in the letter of request, the walkthroughs and some of the other, other issues. And in that capital request, I've placed a preliminary $35,000 to look at engineering a track and what it would take. And that's just a guess. Putting a track on the top of that hill is going to be extensive. And it will take an engineer to look at.
Right.
So we're moving in that direction with what we've got.
Any questions?
Next Tuesday evening at 5:30, we'll be meeting with the Cherokee Central Schools Board of Education. We do that every year to discuss, to discuss the annual agreement between us and them that has to do with Impact Aid and some of those pieces. Since we have a couple of people who are a little newer to the process, I've asked Stephanie to come and to kind of just run over that annual agreement and what you'll be hearing next week. And if you have any questions, this would be a good time. And that way we won't be walking into that meeting on Tuesday with no knowledge at all, okay?
Okay, so I was just going to give a couple of highlights from that agreement. But basically, this agreement has been in effect since 1985. And what it does is it provides funding to Cherokee Central Schools, and it's state funding for non-enrolled students who are not funded by BIE. That would be students that are not enrolled members of a recognized tribe. So in high schools, we include those students in our account for the purpose of state funding. And then also, they provide us with a Impact Aid survey form on each of those students. This year, there's no changes to our agreements, the same as it was before. I've just only updated the, the school year. The funding sources that are included in this agreement are teacher allotments, teacher assistance for kindergarten through third, non-instructional support personnel, CTE or Career and Technical Education Program, some instructional supplies, at-risk student services, textbook allotment, school technology, and driver's ed, but driver's ed is not really part of this agreement. The state actually provides all the funding for driver's ed for Cherokee Central Schools. They send that to us and it's just a pass-through. So they fund 100% of their ninth grade students for driver's ed. I provided in this handout for you the funding formulas just so you can kind of just see how those allotments are calculated. But the teacher allotment is our actual positions. And those positions are calculated based on number of students per grade. So like for instance, kindergarten, you get one teacher for every 18 students. And then first grade, you get one teacher for every 16 students and on down. So that's how that calculation is done for this agreement. We just basically take their number of students, based on the number of students per grade, and we do a prorata share of that. Teacher assistance, we get an allotment based on the state average salary and fringe for a teacher assistant. And for this year, that was $33,340, and that was both salary and the fringes. On the next page, just to let you know, the, so based on the funding formulas, also the, for other sources, non-instructional support, we receive $274.80 per average daily membership. And then the CTE program, $34.07 per ADM. And instructional supplies, we get $30.12 per ADM. Plus we get a $2.69 per ADM for eighth and ninth grade for the PSAT testing. At-risk student services, we receive $94.50 per ADM. And textbooks, $32.26 per ADM. And then school technology, we did not receive any school technology funding this year. The state took those funds and used them for the school business modernization program. So we did not receive any school technology, so there'll be no allocation to Cherokee for that. Once again, driver's ed is outside of this agreement, just, but just for your information, we receive $192.71 per, every ninth grader in our ADM. So we, we give them also $192 per student in ninth grade. The, these numbers are all based on for this fiscal year. So right after we meet and go over all this information, then we'll make that distribution to Cherokee Schools. So for this year, the number of students at Cherokee that are on our ADM is 123 students. That will result in five teacher positions, four of which are employed by Cherokee Central Schools. So that allocation is based on a beginning teacher salary plus benefits. And a beginning teacher salary is $35,000. We still have one teacher position that we employ through Sway County Schools. That is as a Cherokee Central Schools teacher. She's been with us for a number of years and because of her retirement, she is still kind of grandfathered in there, so we still employ her. Teacher assistant, the dollar value that will be distributed will be $29,758. And then non-instructional support will be $33,800. And then the remainder of all those allotments total up to $18,705. Driver's ed will be $20,042, and that's on a reimbursement basis. They, they'll invoice us for their costs for driver's ed and we'll reimburse them up to that amount. Overall, it results in a total of about $362,208, of which we'll send to them $288,630. And then we have the one teacher position here that's valued at about $73,000. But once again, it's, it's state, state funding that we distributed back to them, so. Any questions?
Before we all leave tonight, we need to know a count of who will be able to be at the meeting on next Tuesday. You don't have to tell me now, but they would, they plan on feeding us and then having the traditional meeting. It'll go fairly quickly. Normally, there is some entertainment, you know, as we try to outshine the other. I guess there's competition even between school districts, you think? But this year, there'll be no entertainment. We'll get to business and get done, okay? So before you leave, let me know, all right? All right. Next thing on, on the agenda has to do with the possibility of reopening grades six through 12 or more in-person instruction. The law was signed into effect by Governor Cooper last week that required kindergarten through fifth grade to be Plan A and gave the opportunity for the high school and the middle school to be Plan B or Plan A. We are currently operating in Plan B with a staggered schedule at both the middle school and the high school. Before any decisions were made about what direction would be best, we sent a survey out again to teachers, this time to the middle school and to the high school staff. There were 98 staff members that responded. And of those, 54% said they were either very comfortable or somewhat comfortable with moving back to Plan A for four days, at least four days a week. About a third of the staff between the middle school and the high school respondents indicated that there's a level of discomfort, that they have some concerns. I had a conversation with some of the staff and they said they would like to have had an opportunity to explain what they meant by maybe not being comfortable. And so the following day, we sent a second survey out and gave them an opportunity, both the middle school and the high school, to explain what they meant. From that, I learned that the primary concerns have to do with the fact that we're talking, we would be talking about a schedule adjustment kind of late in the year, in their opinion. And I understand exactly where they're coming from on that. It would be very difficult for us if we were to play, to make a change in schedule, to do it before spring break. A reason also that if we were going to make a change, that I would recommend that it happen after spring break would be to allow the, the second wave of staff members to get their second immunization shot. That includes me, which, and that's, it has nothing to do with me, but all of us will be getting our second shot next Thursday. And then that would be fully effective by April the 12th, which would be the Monday after spring break. If we were to come back on April the 12th, that would in effect give us about seven weeks of school left. The last week and a half or so would be interrupted through, through testing. And there is always going to be a time when students are going to have to get used to being back together, kind of get back into the, the order of things whenever there's a schedule change. So that gives us about five weeks or so of solid instruction in person, at least four or five days a week. The staff who are concerned have in their mind as one thought, is it worth the change to create that much adjustment and you'll only have five or six weeks of instruction left? That's a concern. They also are concerned about COVID exposure because our, our students don't have the opportunity by and large to be, to be vaccinated. Although I do want to add that if a student is 16 years old or older and is working, they can, they qualify to get the Pfizer vaccine through Western Carolina University. Isn't that right, Vicki?
Yes, sir.
And so if any of our families have 16-year-old students or older and they're working, I would strongly suggest that they consider looking on WCU's website and signing up to do that, okay?
I just, I called them today to sign my daughter up and they don't have any more currently. They post availability for them each Monday.
Okay.
So getting in touch with them Mondays is the key.
Okay.
And they don't know if it'll be Pfizer or not next round.
Okay, so which, which Okay, so whichever provider, at least it's, it's available.
It is.
And it, and it's on a, you know, however often they can get that to come in. But that hasn't been available in the past. It is now, okay? So our staff is concerned about COVID exposure. They're concerned about the fact that it would be placing more bodies in classrooms. The staff is also concerned about some of the things like lunch logistics, which I understand, particularly at the high school. One of the staff members responded that it would be a good idea to speak with students about this as well. I mean particularly since we're dealing with high school students. And so I took Monday afternoon and spent the afternoon speaking with some seniors and some juniors and some sophomores. They, the students that I spoke with do believe that there could be some academic benefit out of this. But beyond that, they also would like a sense of normalcy and this might provide that sum for them. The seniors specifically have shown some concern about the fact that this year has been unlike any other year and they feel like they haven't had the senior experience. And if we were to go back, that we might be able, probably would be able to help them have that feeling as they move towards graduation. They have some concerns too, and they're very similar to the concerns that are coming from our, from our faculty, okay? I'm putting all of those pieces out in front of you because I want to be totally honest about this. There are benefits and then there are concerns as well. And, and we need to be conscious of both of those. We got a report yesterday from Department of Social Services and it tells us that in the past 14 months, there has been a significant increase in the number of students or the number of children that they have taken into custody. As a matter of fact, it's double the number that it was the year before. And there are records that they are using for this that start on March 1st. Whenever I heard that, it, it made me pause for just a second. Because we've all talked about the fact that the pandemic has created stress in families. But that's proof to me that there's some concern there. As far as COVID trends are concerned in Swain County right now, I gave you two sheets. One come, came from the health department today. Right now, there, to my knowledge, the way that I remember that, there are seven active cases in Swain County. That's significantly lower than it was several weeks ago, but there are still some active cases. As far as the school system, we only have one staff member who is a contact to a positive case. We have zero positives amongst our staff and that's been the trend for several weeks now. And we have a few students who are contacts, but we only have one student who has been tested and identified as a positive COVID diagnosis. That's been fairly steady and it's much better than it was back in January. The health, I talked with Allison today and Allison still has the same thoughts that she did when we were talking about bringing our elementary schools back to more in-person instruction. There is always the concern with having more people in the classroom and how that could affect students if somebody were to, to be diagnosed positive. A key is going to be using the space that we have and maximizing that space and minimizing the opportunity to have that positive contact with, with another, with another kid. The six foot, six-foot rule still applies. However, with the new guidance from Raleigh, the six-foot rule is not a mandate. It is a suggestion as far as the schools are concerned. For the health department, that will still be a standard of measurement, okay? As far as buses are concerned, we are not required any longer, based on the new ruling or the new law, to have one person per seat. We can now have more than one person per seat, but the six-foot rule still, or the six-foot standard still applies. So we need to keep those pieces in mind, okay? Other than that, all the other guidelines and expectations that we had in place before with face coverings and sanitation and not having large groups come together and having prepackaged meals, those still apply. The only difference is the social distancing has been minimized as far as the requirements are concerned. Now, I have, I've spent a lot of time talking to people. I've spent a lot of time thinking about this. And in my opinion, and there are going to be some who probably disagree with me on this, but in my opinion, it's time for us to bring our students back to school and to give them the opportunity to have as much of a normal school experience as they possibly can have for the rest of this year. I believe that there can be some academic gain, but I believe that maybe more importantly than that, it will give us an opportunity to be a second group of influential and caring individuals in the students' lives and that is a significant need right now. I believe they need to see each other, but I need, I believe that we need to be Swain family. And in order for us to do that, I believe that the best route is for us to come back to school beginning August, excuse me, April the 12th for four days a week. Use Wednesdays like we're using it now for several reasons. And then finish out the school year that way. I believe we can do that safely. That is my recommendation and those are my thoughts. Now I've asked our, our, our building level administration to be here and I have some of our district level staff here as well. And if you want to hear their thoughts or if you want to express your thoughts on that, this is your meeting. But at some point, that would be my recommendation for us.
I would ask Sonia, if you're fairly comfortable in high school, you can, I know it's not always going to be six feet, but you can keep them separate pretty good and make sure they keep the mask on above their nose and all that kind of stuff. Is that doing pretty, doing pretty good?
I can guarantee you that.
I'll be doing the best, do you think?
I, I believe we kind of spaced it out. We're going to have some classrooms that are tight. We've got some, because when we were planning second semester numbers, we were definitely planning on max number of social distance. And when you bring A and B together, I've got about seven classrooms that are going to be tight. I have lunch logistics. We feel fairly confident that we can keep them three feet apart. I cannot guarantee six feet apart with lunch logistics. And I'm not sure, what was the other question you asked me?
Basically, does the mask?
The mask, yeah, I mean, we try. I mean, we, we tell the kids, I mean, it's, it's a constant battle and they don't so much mind covering their mouth. It's the nose that they don't like to get it up over. So we know that that would be, and that was one of the, my staff's concerns was the masks of just the battle that you have constantly to, to get them to, to put it up. So, you know, I think it's, goes without saying that young adults are a little less compliant sometimes than the littles at the elementary school, so.
Yeah, one thing Mark and I talked about it, I was, I was more comfortable with the fact that, that through Mark and his, the folks who've helped him and the health department, that we have provided the capability of having shots given to everybody that's concerned. I've had my shots. I hope I'm okay, I think I'm okay. But I feel I'm a lot more comfortable in any environment. I still wear a mask around other people because that, that's for their benefit. But for myself, I'm fairly comfortable that the shots do what they say. So I'm thinking, you know, the staff, if there's a lot of them that did have their shots, I know they may be uncomfortable, but they can get comfortable if they just take a shot and get covered. It does work, based on every research you see. I like the idea of Wednesday cleaning. I read a study last night that, that, that cleaning, that that virus lasts three days on the surface. So if you're doing a cleaning in midweek and they said to keep spraying and cleaning, you gotta spray it and they said they're admitting. I'll clean anyway, my wife, my wife does that. But, so I'm comfortable with the plans you have. I really am. And I, I like the idea of Wednesday. I'd like to have had five days. I think Wednesday gives us a little more protection. And we did before, we were always operating on any, on a day's notice that if all of a sudden something spiked, then Mark's got that authority to go ahead and just, you know, take another avenue. And so I think we've done a good job this, this year of really watching this thing day by day. And y'all have done a tremendous job of carrying that out. And a lot more time and a lot more effort than put to just teach the school, but I appreciate it. Anybody else?
Mr. Curry, do you have a similar thought process or what's, what do you think about the middle school?
I do. I, you know, as, as Mr. Sell referenced, we have some staff with concerns, but the majority are ready to see them back. And even those ones with concerns are fully ready to dive in and do what's expected of them. We all know that academically, four days a week is better than two days a week in person. I mean, that's, that goes without saying. You know, there's some logistical concerns. We have 24 students in a class, several places when we bring them back. Rooms are not very large at the middle schools, so we're looking at three feet is what we're going to be looking at for distancing. You know, the mask issue, the students have done fairly well over the course of the year. That is becoming harder, that messaging, constantly convincing them to keep that up, as she referenced, compliance piece with the older students. So there are concerns, but you know, the, but if you were to ask me to choose, I would say the benefits of coming back four days a week outweigh it.
What about with athletics? Has that changed? I know we've got very low positive, one positive student. Is any of that come from?
Since January, Kim, since January, we have had zero transmission through athletics, zero. I specifically called and asked the nurse at the, the high school about that. There is none. Now, does that mean that some of our athletes have not encountered someone and, and maybe had to be quarantined? But, but yes, but that came from outside of the school system. So within athletics, there's no transmission. And Neil Blankenship was in my office talking today and he reemphasized that. That's another reason, Kim, that I'm, I'm comfortable making this recommendation at this point.
I have one more question about the Plan C students. So there's an option of the law to, that everybody has a right to be virtual Plan C, correct? Okay, if somebody's Plan B now and because of this new transition would want to go to Plan C, is that available?
It is available, it's available to the elementary schools now by application. We have to think about exactly how that's going to affect the classrooms. It will be available at the other schools as well by application. A difference is going to be at the high school because we are halfway through a semester. The students are welcome and will be welcome to come back into the building for, for in-person instruction according to the definitions that have been given to us by the general legislator, legislation, okay? However, they will not be in the classrooms in front of a teacher like the rest of our AB students would right now. They will be in a place where they can receive some help. They will receive lunch like everyone else. They will receive transportation like everyone else. But they will finish their semester on their computer program at minimum because the, the curriculum between the two don't always happen at exactly the same time. And there are some classes in Edmondum that we're not offering necessarily face-to-face and vice-versa, vice versa, okay? So that was a long explanation, I know, Kim, but I want you to, I want you to hear all of the pieces to that, okay? Can they come back? Yes. Will it be, can I guarantee you that the high school students will be in front of a teacher all the time? Absolutely not. Probably not going to happen. Middle school, well, we'll look at that on a case-by-case basis.
But on the flip side of that, if there is a student who's in Plan B now and because of the added days would like to go to Plan C, is that an option?
There is an option. There's an application process for that even now, okay? For our high school students and our high school families, I would ask them to think about that very, very carefully. Because the same thing applies if you're going from B to C. There may be courses that a high school student is taking that are not available. And it may be, and probably will be, that if a high school student wants to go from B to virtual Plan C, they're going to have to work through the entire course again because of the pacing of the curriculum on Edmondum. Do you understand what I mean? Can they? Absolutely. I think that they're looking at a pretty tough road to hoe though.
And that would be part of the counseling process if those applications come in, is that?
It actually goes to me first. The, so they, they apply anything medical with the automatics, but it's always with the caveat that they have to finish that course. And I can't tell you that everything that you've covered in nine weeks sitting in your, you know, science biology class is going to roll over. There's no way in the Edmondum program for me to go in there and delete content. So they have to finish that because we're talking about credits and courses that impact what they're going to do beyond here. And so to just waive that or just give that to them or just expect 50% of the course doesn't mean, I mean, they could start here and basically be a repeat of everything that they've done and they're still missing that whole end. So there's just no way to align that. And we do have lots of CTE courses that kids are currently enrolled in, in Plan B, that when they go C, it's not even an option. So they're going to lose a credit. So it's very, it's, it's a difficult road, like he said, to, to be able to do that. I mean, I would, you know, we, we tell them, we'll grant this, but these are the expectations. And most of the time, they, they don't feel like they can do that, so. But we would certainly look at the possibility of extending some time to them through the summer school situation if they wanted to, to choose that road. Because I understand that there, there may be some concerns of safety and mental health and lots of different things, so.
Yes.
And I'd, at the middle school, sorry, at the middle school level, this has been the case throughout the course of the year. Any student or any family that wants to move their child from Plan B to Plan C or Plan A to Plan C, in this case, we request a meeting so that we can have the conversation. Let them know what their, what, how the program is different than what they have been receiving in person. Give them the full information and what it's going to look like, so.
And we do that over the phone. We just don't bring them up for a meeting.
I'm going to give a shout out to this team back here. And I don't know if it's the appropriate time or not.
We're stealing my thunder.
Well, then I'll, I'm going to give you, then I'm going to stay out of your way because you sign my checks.
That's what I want to do. I just wanted to commend all of y'all through this whole process, faculty, staff, bus drivers, teachers assistants, tutors, janitors, maintenance people. Those numbers speak for themselves. I mean, we've seen the proof in the pudding. K-35, I've got a daughter in second grade out there. She needs to be in school every day. Her attention span's a little better than mine was, Mr. Sell. But I thank all of y'all. We couldn't do it without you. And I know that I have a job, I don't have to be around. If I don't, I'm driving in that truck, I don't have to wear my mask. I'm not around 14, 15 kids every day. My wife will tell you, it's a good thing. But y'all are and our faculty and staff are and our coaches and trainers and all those folks are. And to have the low numbers that we have, it ain't credit to us. It isn't a credit sometimes to even the hierarchy. It's a credit to those that are in the classroom. It's a credit to those who have their, the grease on their hands and the, the ability to do that. And we, I appreciate it and I know, I expect for all of us. We definitely do appreciate it and it's, like I said, it's, it's proved itself. So I think it's only fitting that we move to the next step. And then when that next step proves itself, then we'll eventually find ourselves back to a normal circumstance as far as school attendance. So I think that'll be a, a goal that we need to achieve, but we can't achieve that goal without taking this next step. So thank y'all.
I just had a question about, are y'all still going to be doing the screening process every morning? I mean, I know the numbers are doubling. They come in at once.
We actually had the conversation. We're probably going to double up the effort.
We're probably going to double up the efforts and have two thermometers in the car line and two people asking the questions and then we'll increase the amount of people coming for the student drivers. Right now, we, we've got three down at the buses and I think we can handle it with those three, so. And we have all the unnecessary equipment. We don't need extra equipment. It's just extra manpower, so we'll be.
And I appreciate it. Just like Mitch said, he said it all, but the whole staff, if it wasn't for you guys working as hard as you've had, we wouldn't be where we is at right now. I mean, with these cases being as low as they are, it's because of you guys and it's also because of our students. You know, thinking about wearing the mask all day, I mean, a lot of them, it just don't bother, so, you know, you got, you, you gotta appreciate the students also.
Yes, absolutely.
I would, I don't know if I mentioned, we're, there are going to be a summer school this summer, right?
Yes, there is.
That's, that's, that's in the law and that's what we're planning. That's a good thing. And I don't know if seven weeks makes a difference or six weeks. There may be a difference when a child having to catch up and passing that subject or having to go into the summer school because they're not where they should be and go. So I think that's another positive thing, right? Is that, and I, a big ticket meeting if we have summer school every year for those kids because it's needed. And I think the state and the feds both are saying the next three or four years we're going to have to do that. And then I'll, one thing impressed me about this school, and we're still working on how we're going to do this later to make this a little better. There was recently someone that's assistant or in this ci, in this town passed and, and their parent worked at the high school and had worked as assistant for years. The high school did something to help that family and it's touched me. That is a real community school. The thought that went into that and what they did for that family, that speaks volumes for where this heart is good to develop. And I really appreciate that. That is, that is, I thought that, that has made my year, that we take care of each other. And we're still doing that. And I'll give you another anecdote, but I won't do it on what it means sometimes, just every once in a while give somebody a compliment. You don't know what that means. It may not mean much to you, you may not think much about it, but a lot of times there's people out there that are living for that and they don't get it. And when they get it, it might make their year. So there's not enough compliments we can give, I believe, to some of the things y'all have done this year and I appreciate it too. All right, any other questions?
Questions, thoughts? Mr. McKinney, that, that takes us past the discussion and into action. Is there, do y'all see any reason for us to need to go into closed session this evening? Okay. Well, then the first action item is the recommendation to reopen the middle school and the high school to more in-person in, uh, instruction. And so I would recommend to the Swain County School Board that we return to in-person instruction for four days a week at both Swain Middle School and Swain High School for the remainder of the school year, beginning April the 12th. And of course, we will be watching the numbers and we will do everything that we can to keep every person safe. That includes our staff. And there's a guarantee in the law where the staff has the opportunity to self-identify and go through a process for additional support. That's available and we'll make sure that everyone knows that. But my recommendation is that we move back to four days a week, all students in Swain County, except for Wednesday. Pre-K is excluded from this, there are already five days.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second that motion. Second. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, I show hands. Motion is carried.
I'm going to skip the next one because I just don't want to do it. So I recommend the Swain, you think I'm kidding? I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Jessica Holder as part-time CTE Administrative Assistant at Swain High School.
Motion, I second.
I approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, I show hands. Motion is carried.
I recommend Swain County Board of Education employ Samuel Green as part-time custodian at Swain Middle School.
Motion. All right, motion in.
Second.
Second in discussion. All in favor, I show hands. Okay, motion is carried.
I recommend Swain County Board of Education employ Kevin Aldman as Administrative Assistant at the central office effective March 19th, 2021.
Careful with the motion.
Second.
Have any discussion? All in favor, I show hands.
Mr. McKinney, do I have to do the other one?
I'm afraid you do, she'll fire us off. If we could, if she says take it off there, we will.
You want me to take it off?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I did all of that intentionally, you know? I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the retirement resignation of Vicki Davis as Principal of Swain West Elementary effective July 1st, 2021.
A motion, I second. All right, go, motion, I second. I'm going to give one item of discussion. Vicki has always impressed me about her, her mood, attitude, that going about the job. She is so energetic and so pleasant when, when you see her working with people and that means a lot. I, I wish you well. I think you're enjoying, I hope you don't have to go home and sit out and use those talents out somewhere else because you got them. And, but I do hate to see you go. Done a great job. All right, all in favor, I show hands. Motion is carried.
Those are all of our action items. There's some information items for you. Kim Mason is going to be volunteering to assist with Swain County Car, High School Car Show, which is scheduled for, I believe, the last week, last Saturday in April. And we talked about, or I brought that to you the last time. Kim has had a background check. Actually, Kim could, could pass as a, a level one volunteer if she wanted to apply for that. And I don't know, do we have that volunteer from her or is this, just a notification she's going to be working?
Notification will work.
Okay.
And that we've done a background check.
Okay. We're assigning a, a couple of other staff who are already our employees to work in the I-Cares After-School Program. That's Alyssa Holbert and Trina Stiles. And then we had a conversation via text today about the possibility of moving our April Board Meeting from the 12th to the 19th. And I've asked that you would consider that because the week in front is spring break and there are several of us that are going to be out of town. And it really is helpful for us to have the week right before the board meeting to get all of our ducks in a row. So if that's a, if you would approve that, then we can move that meeting. Is that all right with all of you?
Yes. I'd like for any other of yous.
I don't think so.
Just to move the meeting.
Great.
Am I okay with it?
Good. Then, Mr. McKinney, that's all that I have on the agenda for this evening.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn? No, I'm motion in seconds. Adjourn, all in favor, adjourn.
Thank you all very much.